We're good.
They're all coming on board.
I see forty-one.
Something familiar about this.
Get off. How did he jump in?
You that guy.
Already, already. Put some clothes on.
This is strange. How you guys doing over there?
Oh, we're doing great.
Good. Hold on, I think.
Michael, are we, are we on, Michael, or not?
Yeah. Go for it.
How are people on? I thought we were muted.
How come everybody else isn't on the screen? Oh, there they are.
I don't know what's showing on your screen, David, but I'm seeing everyone and everyone except the board is muted at present.
Steve is not muted.
Steve is not muted.
Steve, stifle yourself, Steve.
I will. That's funny. I have, I must be able to get right in from before.
Okay. So, uh. Good evening, everyone. I'm sure we're anticipating a long night, so I'll call a meeting to order. Like to go over a few things. Tonight, we're gonna be, we're here to listen to the public. It's a local short-term rentals, chapter one hundred, and their section of one hundred and thirty-four. There is one mistake. It was an unlisted secret action currently, but it is a type-one secret action. So that's one, one, one little change. So basically tonight, you know, we're here, as I said, just, we're just here to listen to you. We're not, you know, getting into back and forths. We wanna, you know, understand your concerns and where you think the law is either, is either good or bad, or, you know, or how you, how you feel in general. We have several correspondence that were written. They will be put into the record, but I'm not gonna read them tonight. If the owners of those, they will be on the website for anyone that would like to see them. If a, the authors are on tonight, they're welcome to, to read them. At our firehouse meeting in October two thousand and nineteen, it was standing room only, and it was probably one of the most civil meetings I've been at, and I'm hoping for the same tonight. We're here to work with you on this. We, you know, spent a lot of time on this. This is like kind of a starting point in a way. This is a law we thought was, you know, after going through everything was good. So after tonight, we'll consider everything and all statements that are made and, and go from there. So I'd like to, everybody just keep in mind that, you know, we're all neighbors and let's, you know, we'll get our points across and, and move on from there and, and discuss that, and the board will take everything into consideration. Understand it is a draft law. It's not etched in stone. Changes can be made, and that's why we're having the public hearing, and that's why we're taking comments, written or verbal. Let's see. So a few ground rules for the speakers. If you'd like to speak tonight, there is a little hand icon on the side of your screen somewhere. I don't have it on mine, but if you wanna speak, you can wave that or somehow make, make that work for you. And Michael Mel will announce you and, you know, one at a time, and will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes. Everyone can have three minutes to speak. Marie Early will have, have sometimes cards she'll hold up, Vanna White style. She's promised us. She's gonna parade around the room, and there will be one minute and thirty, thirty seconds, so that you know where you're at. Of course, if you go over by a few, we're, we're not gonna, you know, shut you down, but please, you know, try to, try to stick to three minutes. Let's see. We're, we'll take, we're gonna, we'll take, we're gonna try to get every, we're not try, we will have, get everyone that would like to speak to speak, so that it's on the record. If we can't do that tonight, then we're gonna be discussing later on how to proceed with that. There'll be a dead stop of eight forty-five, and at that time, village board will review how the night went and where we are and where, how we wanna proceed. The, the written statements or any written correspondence or concerns you'd like to put into the record will be, it'll be open for at least one more week. Right now, the, the law is in Putnam County, so we're waiting on a response from them and their planning. So usually, our clerk says they get back to us fairly quickly, but it'll definitely be at least a week, so there's plenty of time for written comment if we don't extend it even further. So the first people we will take comments from will be village residents, and once we hear all village residents, we'll then go to property owners in the village, and then whoever else, after that, whoever else should like to comment for whatever reason. Each person has to clearly state their name. We need to have this all, it's all gonna be transcribed. It'll all be on the record, so we need you to, you know, speak slowly, give your, your names, address. If you'd like, if you are a short-term rental operator or not, that's totally up to you. And let's see what else we have. I think, I think that's basically it. Three minutes. If people, if you've heard pretty much concerns addressed already, things that you might, like maybe the number of rentals, and you heard someone state that already, that it's unfair, or that it's too many, or not enough, or whatever. You know, I try to keep your statements brief and try to, if you have new, something else to add to that, please do, or if you'd just like to say you agree with them, so that we can move on, that would be appreciated, so we can keep things moving tonight, and everybody can, as many people as we can get tonight heard, we'll, we'll, we'll hear. So I, I think that's it. So with that, I will make a motion to open the public, the public hearing for short-term rentals.
I will second that.
We have a second on favor?
Aye.
Okay, Michael.
Um, the first hand I saw was Alex Miller. If you could unmute yourself.
Sure. Does everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, hi, my name is Brian Alex Miller. I go by Alex. All the village residents mean, know me as such. My wife and I live at forty-five Main Street downtown, basically. When we purchased the home, you know, we, we started engaging in the, in the part-time rental, so that we could have friends and family come stay with us. So it wasn't a financial consideration. It was a situation where we wanted people to be able to come stay with us and still be able to make some rental income simultaneously. Obviously, with a full-time rental, that is not possible. So that, that's the motivation behind it originally. We did wanna address a couple of critical points in terms of the stated goals of the regulation, however. One of them being regulate and minimize the impacts of parking noise and trash sometimes associated with short-term rentals. If the village stipulates off-street parking, which we're fine with, with the rental, then parking is not an issue. If the village enforces that the rental be truly shared, single-family or dual-family residence, then there should not be any trash or noise, and, and this is, I, I wanted to address, and the fact that, you know, we've been doing this for eight years. We've had over three hundred and fifty guests, right? We have never had a noise complaint. We've never had a policeman have to visit. We've never had trash become an issue for our lovely village. The reason for this is that we live in the home. We share the property. People are much more respectful of a true shared property. A lot of the stories that we hear anecdotally of, of homes that are being rented, where there's noise and parties going on, almost unequivocally, it's because people are not there to monitor the situation. Even if you're away for part of the time, we have, my, my wife and I are away, people still respect the space as a shared space. They know it's somebody else's house, and it's, there's a kind of difference in understanding about the fact that you're in someone else's space, okay? Point C refers to preserving the residential and community character of the village and its neighborhoods, so that they'll be compatible with surrounding residential uses, et cetera. Again, this goes back to the notion of if the, if the, the property is truly shared, right? The homeowner is there. All of us are not kind of developers that are buying up properties individually. If you're living there, that's not what that motivation is, right? It seems as though some of the context of the stipulation is maybe that, that residents are feared of people buying individual homes and renting those full-time. Of course, that would be a problem, but if it's a shared building, that, that should not be a problem. We live here and we're, and we're residents here. We also think that there is a problem designating the B-one and the R-one district equally. We think that the B-one is a mixed-use district meant for more density. I'm an architect. I know what that means. So that's a consideration that we disagree with. I only just wanted to make one more point, too. In terms of how much money these units bring to the local economy, conservatively, like in the last two months, we took an accurate poll of, of our guests that stayed with us. They averaged two hundred dollars per stay. Within that two-month period, we had sixteen stays, okay? Over a calendar year, conservatively, conservatively, our unit generates twenty thousand dollars for the village, and these are for restaurants and retailers that need those two to three night stays, not the one or two-hour hiking stays. So I tried to get as much in there as I could, and I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Mary Ann Remy. And Alex, if you could lower your hand, please. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Remy. I live at Five Cedar Street.
I'm sorry, five, which street?
Cedar.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I agree with what Alex just said about when it is a shared space, when the, the short-term rental is a portion of a residence as opposed to the entire residence. The issues that people tend to be concerned about with trash, noise, parties, and, and et cetera, are completely ameliorated, and if there are issues, they can be addressed immediately because there's somebody on site. The other point about that, when an Airbnb is shared, is it does not reduce the amount of, of residences for full-time invested community members. You have a full-time invested community member in the residence when part of their residence is a short-term rental. So I would like to ask the board to consider differentiating between different types of short-term rentals. The type where is it an entire house and the type when it is a portion of a house. For example, in my home, the basement, or it could be a cottage in the back, or a portion of the home. I also think that there might be the possibility of, of, one, increasing the number of nights and the, the number of rentals overall that the village allows, and segregating them by this many for when it's an entire residence and this many when it's a portion of a residence, because when it's a portion of the residence, you don't have the same kind of issues that you have when it's an entire residence. The other, the other point that I wanted to make is that of the requirement that somebody live in the village for three years prior to applying for a permit.
You guys might have to not use Wi-Fi for a little bit.
What?
You might not have to use Wi-Fi for a little bit, because I feel like we have no.
Who's, who's jumping in?
Yes, of course it does.
Malia, can you mute yourself?
Honey.
Malia.
It happens.
Mary Ann, why don't you continue?
Sorry.
Sorry, Mary Ann.
Yeah. Oh, three years, the three years. That, that, it seems like the reason for that is so that people don't purchase property in the village for the purpose, for the purpose of having a short-term rental, but for people who already live here, who may not have lived here for three years, like me. I've already purchased my property here, so that, that wouldn't seem to apply. So I'd like to request that that not be a requirement for people who currently own property in the village. And then the last thing, the liability of two million dollars liability insurance is excessive. The standard, the norm, is one million dollars.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay.
Um, next person is Irene Piazza. Excuse me if I'm mispronouncing it.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, hello. So my comments are.
Excuse me, your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six Paulding Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the fact that I am someone who uses short-term rentals when I travel. I am not opposed to conceptually short-term rentals. I am in favor of reasonable regulation for this village. That being said, my suggestion is a few things. The pro or the people who are doing the short-term rentals, right, that collective group, I am going to suggest that somebody from that very passionate group volunteer to become some kind of a point person for the people, instead of having to use the village board as like a homeowners association to keep in line unethical or not-good managers of their short-term rentals, because that's where the complaints come from, from somebody who is not managing it probably very well, okay? Either because they're off-site, or they're just not good at it or something, okay? So if you yourself run a short-term rental and are really schooled in it, could you keep in line the people who are not doing it either ethically or correctly or as intended? And how would you go about doing that? Could you be a point person for the regular citizens of the village and the board? Whoever this person is, who can take on that responsibility of representing the actual short-term rental owners or proponents? I'm not sure of the term for that. The second thing is, is the village able on their website to show how local citizens can complain directly to the short-term rental sites such as Airbnb? If you, so you don't have to complain to the village. Perhaps you can complain directly to Airbnb if there is a problem with the short-term rental, and that goes directly to that person who was renting the place also. And one more thing, just as a, as a note, I do live next door, right next door to a habitual short-term rental, and it's not a problem. The problem, the little stick I got was during COVID, the village did not restrict any of the short-term rental turnover, and every three days during the height of lockdown, my child could not go to school. I could not go down to the Riverside Park, because that was closed. Tots Park was closed. But every three days, I had a new group of people moving in and out of my house, and I, it was galling. So that's a little bit part of where I'm coming from, like, you know, are you gonna regulate it or not? What are you gonna do about it, and is that a case where the village has the capacity to say, we are suspending short-term rentals for a period of time? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next persons are John and Charlotte Palmer. Would you unmute yourself, guys?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yep.
Yep.
Hi, John Lane and Charlotte Palmer Lane. We live at Five Mountain Avenue in the village. We've been residents for twenty-two years now. I think I, I'm in agreement with a lot that I heard from what I consider, and, and I think it's defined in the proposed regs as owner-occupied short-term rental businesses. And we've roughly formed a group of certain other residents, us and a few others, and many of which are on this call, sort of as a rough Cold Spring Union of hosted Airbnb residents. We've written to the board. I'm not gonna go through all the detail, but I'll just review briefly where I think we stand. We don't oppose the entirety of the regulations, but I think as, as has been pointed out by a lot of people here, that there are certain, certain concerns about several of the proposed rules. Now, our family-run Airbnb businesses have been built up over the past several years. Their owner hosted and supervised. They receive very high ratings. We've experienced no complaints from neighbors. And since the October two thousand and nineteen public meeting on the issue, a lot has happened to heighten the importance of these family-run, owner-occupied businesses and the Airbnb business model to many families and residents, mainly due to the extraordinary crisis we've gone through, through the COVID pandemic. We're now just coming out of the back end of that crisis, still very unsure about our economic futures. I mean, I can tell our story. I went through a major health crisis the end of two thousand and nineteen after the public meeting. My business has been diminished sort of irreparably, certainly during the shutdown. Charlotte, who's in the arts, lost most, if not all, of her projects last year. And there are other members of our group that can speak to their own stories if they decide to talk. I mean, I wanna point out that we appreciate very much the extensive amount of time and effort that the village board has put into and devoted in crafting these rules and how difficult this process must have been. We're not challenging the proposal in its entirety, but only those proposed rules that really appear unnecessary or unrelated to reasonable public health or safety concerns. So in a nutshell, I think, I think what we, a lot of people have covered those. We don't agree with imposing a lottery, a cap on the number of permitted owner-occupied properties, or capping the maximum number of nights to sixty per year, or imposing a two-night minimum stay. There are other rules we can discuss. What I think our goal would be is to meet at a future date, and we would offer to meet with the members, such as in a public workshop, to provide our detailed comments and perhaps amendments to the rules. The principal concerns we heard in two thousand and nineteen was that, was that the absentee owner inadequate supervised property.
John.
Are the problem, and so I'll stop there. Yeah, I'll stop there, and I think you got the gist of where we stand. Thanks.
Thank you. The next hand is Ellen Dinerman, Dinerman. Apologies again if I abused your name. Ellen.
Hi, Ellen Dinerman. Thank you for trying. I have a, a property on four-two-five East Mountain Road South. So it, the address is Cold Spring, but it's not in the village. It's up East Mountain. And it's been in the family for a hundred years, and I am only there mostly in the summer. I'm just newly-retired teacher related, newly-retired related to COVID. But basically, I don't think my property has any problem with the parking issue or the trash issue. And for me, it has definitely helped me keep paying the taxes for town. So the income is important, and I plan to spend more time there as a retired person. But I, I don't think the lottery system is a good system, and I have, by personal choice, just always done longer-term rentals. So the shortest amount is ten days, but it's, it's not in the village, and it doesn't have that, people coming up on the train for, you know, one night. So I support some kind of careful regulation, but also hope the village helps people keep supporting this other stream of income, especially when there's so much income, economic hardship. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Matt DeGrasse.
Thank you. Our previous residents' comments.
Again, I can't hear you, Matt, for some reason. I don't know why.
You're just saying that.
How about now?
That's better. Can you give us your address, please?
Yeah, thirty-two Market Street, so I'm down in Village, by the train. Thank you for your comments to those who spoke before me, and thank you all for the work you've put in and your careful thought. I live in the home that I have in the past.
Can I, can I stop you just for a second? It's a way to turn your volume up. I, I can barely hear you. I don't know if everyone else can. If it's just me, then continue, but I'd, I'd like to hear what you have to say, and I can't.
I can try. I'm not sure why I've never had.
Okay, that sounds a little better, maybe if you're closer. I don't know, sorry.
I'm speaking closer. I live in the home, and we rent a suite that has a private entrance. So that's the nature of our situation. I'd echo some of the other people's previous comments about differentiating somehow between a shared space versus renting out the entire space. There should be some sort of way of differentiating between them. I don't think there's really any issues similar to like what Alex Miller had spoke about, the Bad Apple anecdotes. I wanna say, we rent a one-bedroom suite that has a private entrance off the front of the house, and without too much effort, we have rented one hundred and fifty to one hundred and seventy nights a year in the past. And the majority, probably two-thirds of those, are one-night stays. Simple one-bedroom suite without a kitchen, without, you know, it's not a full apartment. People, and to gravitate, people who are coming for one night, and to gravitate to that. I think, I think making a minimum two-night stay would be a mistake. I think the village would lose out on a lot of potential income. Again, over a hundred nights a year are one-night stays with our history. And then with that, I think a sixty-night minimum, this idea of differentiating between shared space versus renting the entire space, it's too low. I think, I think the businesses in town do not survive on the local residents alone. And I think this is worth changing the businesses as well. I don't have data on that, support that, but that is, that is my take. I think you'd be, it's a small village, and it's really nice to come visit for two nights, but a lot of people wanna come for one night. I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Michael.
He's frozen. I think his screen is frozen. There.
We've lost Michael. They collapsed.
So, so Bill has his hand raised.
What happened to Michael, though?
His screen is frozen.
So.
Hello, can you hear me?
Who's speaking, please?
Okay, Bill McComish, twenty-nine Rock Street.
Go ahead, Bill.
Is he okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, there are approximately ten properties in the I-one zone, which have been arbitrarily excluded from the short-term rentals in Cold Spring. And six of those are residential properties on Rock Street, including mine, twenty-nine thirty-one Rock Street. As everybody in the village knows, Rock Street has always been residential and never light industrial, which is I-one. So to include those properties is part of a pattern of conduct that is unfair, illegal, as well as outrageously arbitrary and capricious conduct by the village. And I'm placing the village on notice of the foregoing. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, I was waiting for the words arbitrary and capricious, and if I could give you a prize for that, I would. But thank you for your comments. Is Miss Dinerman, I, I think you're, should mute. You're not unmuted. So could you mute yourself? Thank you.
Okay, so Eliza Starbucks has her hand up.
Hi, everyone. I am Eliza Starbuck. I live at one-seventy-three Main Street. I also own a business on Main Street, and I work as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. As the president of the Chamber of Commerce, however, tonight I'm speaking as a resident. Um, I want to applaud the village for approaching, getting started on this, I know it's a. It's, it's a, a big issue around the nation, I've heard, I've been doing a lot of research, I've been speaking to a lot of the residents. I've heard, um, both sides in the community, I think there are things that we do need to regulate and I appreciate that you guys are trying to curb. Um, anybody who might want to try and play Monopoly with our village and buy up properties and turn them into. Airbnb hotels. I've also heard on the flip side, lots of residents who, you know, sometimes they fall upon hard times or they just, um. They enjoy the process of hosting or, you know, for whatever reason, there's, there's a lot of. There's six hundred and fifty five houses and six hundred and fifty five points of view in this village. Um, and that said, there's only six hundred and fifty five residences. And if we lose, um, families in those residences, we lose kids at the school. Um, and on the block to play with, we lose, um, we lose a lot, so I absolutely support. Residents who want, residents who want to Airbnb parts of their houses while they're living there. Um, I, I. Support reasonable caps as long as they're not, um, completely. Crippling anybody who actually really needs to Airbnb, um, I like the idea of doing a tiered system, different, different versions for different scenarios, different permit fee. Structures, um, so I would encourage you guys to consider, um, different, different approaches for different needs. Um, and I definitely support. Uh, removing anybody who doesn't live here from being allowed to Airbnb in the village, so, um, keep up the good work. Uh, I'm sure you guys will come to something that seems reasonable, um. Somewhere in the middle, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle McCoy, you're next.
Unmute yourself, there you go.
Yeah, I just had to unmute. Hi, I'm Michelle McCoy, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'm at twenty five Mountain Avenue. Uh, I do not rent out my house in the village, but I do own three additional properties, one at the Jersey Shore, one at a Vermont ski mountain and one a mixed use. Long term rental investment property and we use short term rentals. But my point of view is coming from somebody that lives next door to a short term rental and I don't know if anybody remembers, I spoke at the two thousand and nineteen meeting about my experience. About what happens when there's no regulations, noise, parties, guests that are disrespectful to neighbors, trespassing. Unaccessible and absent homeowners over occupancy. Um, the house next to us, three bed and one bath with twelve adult guests. When there's no registration, no safety and fire inspection and no limitations, this is what can happen. I thank the board for drafting a plan and I support occupancy limits, fire inspections, regulations, the limit on the number of units. And the fact that the unit should be owner occupied. For parking, if a property doesn't have a parking spot, just like a business in the village can do, I think they should be able to secure a parking spot on another property as long as they have one available. For a guest that's to allow them to use if they don't, their property doesn't have one, just like businesses do, let them buy a parking spot from somebody else to be able to use. Um, I, my one question for the board, uh, that they can address at whatever time is about whether the condos. Uh, Forge Gate, whether they have their own regulations in place for short term rentals in their own homeowners associations and whether the board. Inquired or addressed that. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara, Tara Vemus, vamos.
Hi there, um. So I'm trying to. Well, can you hear me? Because apparently I, can you hear me or am I frozen?
There you are, loud and clear, yep.
Cool, I can't start my video, but that's how it goes. Um. I, uh, first of all, thank you, Bill, I had no idea that it's possible that my house on Rock Street might be zoned industrial, I did not know and I'm. Going to find out about that, hadn't noticed in the original thing, um, I have.
Tara, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, I'm at six Rock Street, Cold Spring. And, um. Basically, I think that the, the overall proposal is complex, not fair. Um, and. And problematic in a bunch of different ways. Um. I think that the sixty day limit is really short. I think that, um, if somebody wants to rent out their house for two months during the summer and then another weekend here or there, that should be. Like something more like ninety days or a hundred and eighty days seems much more reasonable to me. Um, the restriction on not being able to rent if you don't have a parking space seems contrary to the fact that we would really like. To have some guests that show up here without cars, we are in walking distance of the train as a village, everybody that's in the village is in walking distance. Of the train, you can indicate on like a site like Airbnb, you can indicate that you have no parking place and that there's no parking available and I think that that. Is reasonable that people should be able to say something like the only parking is an overflow parking several blocks away. Or that there is no overnight parking. Um, the two night. Distinction also seems. Capricious, it does make it more expensive to throw a party, but I actually think that somebody that's. Planning on coming in and throwing a party in a space, which they're probably forbidden to do on the things that they signed when they rented it. Might just, might be just as happy to pitch in the extra night in order to be able to throw their party, I think that, uh, the twenty minute. Restriction where you want to have somebody come and watch the part, be able to respond to the property within twenty minutes, that seems to be. The thing that will. Stop. You know, bad behavior from, from guests, it's not going to stop bad behavior from guests, but I do think that it will give neighbors some ability to redress. And it'll mean that, you know, people will have to contact each other in town and find somebody that's willing to sign up to be that person for you if you're renting out your house. Um. I think that, uh, if we're looking at how to create more long term rentals, we might just have to take. A longer look at that, I, I do agree that it makes sense that it should be an owner occupied space. And that we don't want people coming in and turning housing into, you know, strictly. Long term rentals, maybe we can set up some, I mean strictly short term rentals, maybe we can set up something where if someone has. A short term rental unit, they have to put in like two long term rental units before they're allowed to add a. An additional second short term rental unit, but if it's restricted, if it's restricted already to like ninety or a hundred and twenty days a year, then, uh. That will stop that no matter what. Um, but even in terms of, of that, the one hundred and twenty day limit or something like that, there are definitely people. In town that have invested in property or through other mishaps become dependent on having. Uh, like whether they did it intentionally or whether it's because of cataclysmic stuff happening in their lives. They may now have something where they are dependent on renting properties out in order to stay in town. And, um, I think that if you've changed something like this, you're going to have to give some people like a three year time slot to get out of the. Ways that they're invested, I have not done any short term rentals yet, but I'd love to be able to someday, if only I can get my house cleaned up, so, um. Thank you, everybody, thanks for the chamber for putting together a good possibility.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I believe I, I got booted off, but I'm back, so I'm not sure whether Michelle or Agnes is next.
Agnes is next.
Agnes, please.
Hi, team trustees, thank you so much, um, for putting together the guidelines and, um. And thank you everyone else for such, um, thorough conversation, um, my family and I actually just moved.
I'm sorry, Agnes, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, sure, we're at thirteen Parrot Street.
Thirteen, thank you.
In town, um, yeah, and, um, we just moved from Harrison, actually, and, um, we, we bought a house, um, that was actually, we only have, it's my husband and I and our two young children, but we actually bought a house that was larger. Um, than we needed, knowing that, um, there was sort of the potential for, um, Airbnb or short term rentals. Um, in town and knowing that Cold Spring had that potential, um, to draw that kind of tourism. Um, I do think also in the R one district right now, um. Putting a three hundred foot restriction, um, puts us in competition with a lot of our neighbors, um, in sort of this, um, crowded area of the R one, so I'm not sure. Um, how that would apply to something in the R one district, if that would still apply with a three hundred foot restriction. Um, I did want to tell a story tangentially, um, I was actually on Harrison's Architectural Review Board, um, and. To my surprise, after being on the board for quite some time, um, we noticed that there were no guidelines for the aesthetic, for the town signage, um, billboards and awnings. And as a result, no one wanted to hang out in Harrison's otherwise expensive and affluent village. And so in essence, our, our downtown's look and lack of regulation negatively impacted the economy of our town. So, um, a town board member and I, we put together guidelines for the signage, um, but there were a lot of restrictions that then, um, you know, the, the. The business owners, um, thought were unfair because especially during the pandemic, um. To have to then now, um, when, when their economy is already suffering, have to change around what they were doing, um. I, you know, it was, it was just a consideration that we had to take that, um, you know, right now the economy is not so great, so, um, we really had to be respectful. Um, of people having to change their source of economy. Um. But one of the things that we did do was, um, we, you know, in order to create new guidelines, we took a compilation of what the other villages were doing and I think. Having been successful, um, in, in creating the aesthetics for those towns, we leaned heavily on what they were already doing and I think. Other people having done the research, um, if the standard day, if the standard in the Hudson Valley is a hundred twenty days, then I don't think, you know, Cold Spring should have no less than that, um. Because if that's the standard that other people are doing, I think being much more restrictive, um, comes at a cost, um, of the existing needs of the current residents. I think that's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, um, Michelle McCoy.
You already spoke.
Okay, then I guess it's Alan.
Hi, I'm Alan Siegel, six Rock Street, and thank you for listening to our varied opinions and all the work you put into this proposal. Um, I agree with, uh, you know, goals like trying to, uh. Keep housing stock on the market and, uh. And regulations that support that, like having owner occupied rentals. I'm concerned about. Residents that, uh, do, do not make a business out of short term rentals and just want to. Very occasionally rent out their, um, property, whether it's while they're on a summer vacation or the. West Point, uh, graduation or something like that, and I think, uh. The regulations are overwhelmingly restricted to the point that they would prevent that. Uh, um. With all the limits on number of rentals that you have to buy for the lottery and, and, and win that, that, I think if. You're. Not renting on a continual basis, if there should be some threshold that at least where you can just, you know, prove the safety and, uh. Health, uh, requirements once every few years or something like that and, um. And then be able to rent on an ad hoc basis for a limited amount of time. Um, I'm also concerned with some of the micromanaging, uh, of things like, uh, the. Check in times and whatnot, uh, if, uh. I, I don't see where checking really needs to be a disruptive thing to the neighborhood, uh. If I can come home at, you know, two in the morning, I don't see why that. Why someone can't check in at, you know, ten in the evening and then it wouldn't. And why would that would be a disruptive event that has to be regulated. Um, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person up is Aaron Wolf.
Hi, Aaron Wolf, twenty four Parsonage Street, um, I just wanted to say that, um, I think that. The proposed, um, section of the code as it stands is really very good. And probably covers everything that the village needs out of, out of this kind of, um, regulation. Um, I, I do think Tara raised a good point about parking and how, um. We should be encouraging people not to drive to the village and perhaps by allowing some, uh, short term rentals that don't have parking, we would be. Um, doing that. Um, I, I do think it's kind of fascinating. To hear at this meeting and at other meetings from people who think, sound like something is being taken away from them. When in fact, um, short term rentals have been illegal in the village, I guess for, uh, since the code was put in place. So, uh, I, I think, um, with that in mind, you might even want to consider. Perhaps for the first lottery, opening it up at first to people who have not had a chance to rent Airbnbs because they were following. The current regulations and, and rules of the village. Um, and finally, uh, the, the enforcement, I think, is, um, always problematic in the issue in the village for issues, um. Like this where basically neighbors have to. Turn in their neighbors for violating some part of the code, whether it's zoning or historic or, or, you know, maintenance. Um, so I'm, I'm concerned that in some cases this will be hard to deal with. And also, um, I question whether the police might need some extra training. Or, um. Or, you know. They'll need to be aware that this is kind of a new situation, the village will, I think, needs to know that this is a new situation, that the police are being asked to. Work on in addition to their existing duties, so something to think about there. Um, anyway, uh, I think it's good and I hope something like this passes very soon, thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, Tom Quinn. Tom O'Quinn, excuse me.
Hey, that's okay, everyone says that, um, so, um.
I'm sorry, your, your address, please.
Yep, I was about to tell you, six Chestnut Street.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so Todd and Todd Seekerter and I live on six Chestnut Street and I just want to first say that. We don't currently Airbnb and we probably don't plan to our house, so we have. Uh, don't really have skin in the game other than making, wanting to make sure our neighbors and friends are, you know, happy and supported and on both sides, um, we do however have a very successful Airbnb in Palm Springs. And I know this is a completely different in every way, uh, village than Palm Springs as a city, but. Uh, the one, the only thing I wanted to add to the conversation, because most people have said a lot of things I agree with, was I. Definitely agree with the person who said that the lottery idea. It, that was the first thing that kind of I saw that I personally think would, is not a great idea, I feel like it is very competitive, the competitive nature of that. Um. I, I guess I just, I think, I think we have to be careful of making sure that we're not pitting neighbors against each other and we're not creating a situation where people are resentful of. Those who can do it and those who can't because of lottery issues and, you know, all the politics that come into that and also the reporting of neighbors is an issue and I, I really. Think that Irene's idea, um, about making sure there's a representative somehow, whether it's the code, the building inspector or the code enforcer or a volunteer to make sure there's someone that. Can actually respond to things in a really, uh, positive way to, uh, for situations that come up, because I know that Irene had said, I think, last year that, you know, you don't feel good about calling the police on your neighbor, so. That is something, obviously, we don't want to have a hostile village full of people that are kind of, uh. You know, talking behind people's backs about how horrible they are as Airbnb hosts and stuff. And then lastly, the big one is, the one thing that really does work well in Palm Springs and it's a bummer for a lot of people, because as you know, they have the Coachella Music Festival there and it's party central. Um, in April usually, but all year round, there's very, very high, high fines for any kind of noise or music, you cannot have any music outside your house ever. Like nothing, not, you can't hear any music from the property line and people come and they're like, what do you mean, I can't play music by the pool even low, like. No, you can't, you can't have any noise, no loud voices and you get a thousand dollar fine, the guest gets fined a thousand dollars. And it's, everyone knows now, when you go to Palm Springs, like, oh, it sucks, stay in Mount Rancho Mirage because you can actually play music, but Palm Springs, like, there's really high fines, so be careful. And we have a big sign in our property that says, you know, no noise, no music, you will get fined and they come by and they give, they will give you that fine, so it's just something to think about. You know, if the town gets a reputation of enforcing these huge fines. You know, if the town gets a reputation of enforcing these huge fines for noise and partying, if, if people do rent out their entire house, believe me, it works. And it's a big deterrent. And I think it's more important to kind of find the people who are actually breaking the rules and try to preemptively make sure people know that it's serious. That's it.
Good. Thank you.
The next person is Tara Carroll.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, my, my video is not working. I am Tara Carroll. I live at 59 Armando Road in Cold Spring. It's not in the village, but in the village, I do own a building at 69 Main Street, which is where Barber and Brew is. And we're right next door to the Pig Hill Inn. And I also own Old Souls, the outdoor store in the village. We rent our apartment, there's one apartment above the bar. We rent it currently to a long-term guest. But we also have Airbnb'd in the past. And I just want to bring up the fact that the rules are potentially, they're unintentionally excluding. This is a commercial building. It's owned by an LLC for a lot of reasons. But with the new rules, I would not be able to be an Airbnb host. And I just would like to potentially put out there that maybe there could be a community, I mean, a committee where it is consistent of people, consisting of people who do have Airbnbs, who are in the village, who are in out, you know, more out, outlying areas, people who are for this, people who are against it, to get together and talk about these rules. And I would be happy to be on that, because I don't think that these rules make a lot of sense for somebody who does have an Airbnb thoughtfully. Also, I am in a commercial district. This is an old building. Sound travels in all of the old buildings. It's difficult for me to rent to a long-term tenant because of the sounds of being on Main Street. Airbnb makes a lot of sense. We have hosted a number of people, very diverse guests of all walks of life, races, LGBTQ, different countries. People who stay come back over and over again. They buy property in Cold Spring. They visit all of our businesses on Main Street and, and, and in Phillips Town. I absolutely agree with what was mentioned about potentially tiering the rules based on the district you're in, commercial or residential. And I just wanted to thank everybody. I know how much time it takes to put into writing codes and plans. It's an immense amount of work and I appreciate it. I'm absolutely, you know, willing to help in any way for, you know, the future potential revision of these codes. Thank you.
Thank you. David, I don't see any new people, but Irene Pietz has her hand up again. Do we want to speak to her or ask if there are other folks who haven't spoken? I see David and Malia raising their actual hands. Shall we go to them next?
Yes.
Okay, David, if you unmute yourself?
Thank you, Mike. And I want to thank the entire board for allowing non-village residents to speak. I know that's been something that has prevented me from talking in the past, so thank you for that. My big question is this, what problem are we trying to solve here with this permit system? What problem really are we trying to solve? When I read the proposal, I saw that most of those problems were in the beginning. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about them. First of all, parking. So I've had, you know, I've managed Airbnbs in the village. And also I've managed an Airbnb on Lane Gate Road. And I can tell you that people email you on Airbnb. And a lot of times when they email me on Lane Gate Road, they would say, is this walkable from the train station? And when I said no, then I wouldn't hear from them again. In fact, more people want an Airbnb that are walkable from the train and without cars. So actually, if you have a three-bedroom house with, with three people in it, they're all going to have cars in the village. But if someone's Airbnb-ing, they're not going to have a car probably, or at least half the time they won't. Another thing I saw was trash. Another number I saw was trash. So like, let's say you have an Airbnb that you're renting year-round and it fills 150 times a year, as opposed to 365 times a year that a permanent resident is going to live there. The Airbnb actually makes less trash than someone who's living there permanent. And, you know, also there was community character was one of the things that Airbnb somehow is robbing us of community character. But I don't really find that to be valid. This town is full of community-oriented people, more and more so every year. And the idea that people won't be able to be on boards or coach or be scout leader, you know, so as someone who, who coaches and who is a scout leader, you know, I know a lot of that stuff is actually Phillips Town. Those are Phillips Town groups. So, you know, I'm on two boards and, you know, I do that from Phillips Town, not from the village. This is a much broader community to pull from. So I feel like the only real problem that, that I saw that could really affect people's lives is noise. And, and that's legitimate. If you have, like, Michelle, who's a friend of mine, I, I identify with her. If she has an Airbnb right next to her, that's a noise problem. But I'll tell you something, with Airbnb, there's a tremendous amount of control that you have with your post. We've never had a party in any Airbnb that we've ever rented, not ones that I own or ones that I've managed, because we're very careful when we post. We put limits on the number of people that can stay. Is that one minute left, Marie, or one minute down?
One minute left.
Oh, God, Marie's on me. Okay. So we, we're very careful with our listings. And we're very clear that there are, are limits to the number of people and the number of cars. And so rather than a permit system, I want to echo what Tom O'Quinn said. What we need is not a permit system, but a fine system, okay? Because that would drive me crazy. If the house next to me that was two feet from my house was constantly having parties, that would actually drive me crazy. I think what we need is a fine system for people that are having parties. And also, the owners can be responsible for paying fines for noise violations too. I think that rather than, you know, I look at some of these measures and they seem somewhat draconian to me. 20 minutes, you have to be there in 20 minutes, or 60 days, or only 34 units? All of that is way overreach, in my opinion. And we could come up with a fine system to be punitive for people that are doing it wrong, as opposed to a permit that is punishing people that are doing it right. Sorry, Maria, I went a little over there.
And David, what, what's your address, Dave?
I live at 265 Lane Gate Road in Cold Spring, New York. We have a business at 75 Main Street in the village.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have-
I also wanted to speak. I can go later if that works. You can, you can call the next person and I'll go later. We don't seem to have our, our hand signal that's, that we can use.
Okay, David, how do you want to go?
I do not care. You can let her speak. I mean, she's right there.
Malia, why don't you go ahead?
Great, thank you. I also just want to say thank you to Tom. You know, even though he was talking about Palm Springs, it really is nice to hear what works. What's, you know, what rules are applied and what actually works. I, I too think that this, there's a lot, there's a lot here, and I think it's too much. And in the end, my hope to be a good neighbor and a community member is to, to again, not, you know, not fight with my neighbors, but for our lives to be the best they can here in Cold Spring. And I sympathize with Michelle. I don't know if there, I don't know if Alan, for instance, or sorry, Aaron. It was unclear when he was speaking. He had, you know, a bad neighbor that wasn't running their Airbnb the right way. But, you know, we want to do the right thing. And it's nice to hear what's applied and what works. So, you know, proposed rules that actually solve issues instead of creating new ones. It's been a particularly difficult year in, in my business, in a lot of businesses. My business on Main Street is a yoga studio on the top floor of a building that, like Tara, is also an LLC. And to pay the mortgage after not being allowed to open for more than eight months because of the rules of Governor Cuomo and gym settings and studios, it was the only way that we could pay our mortgage. I'm dedicated to this village and, and to its health. And it was the only way that we could make it through, to be quite honest, and to stay where we were. And my neighbors probably didn't even know that I ever even rented it. I have rules that are, you know, for people and no children, all of, all of these things that you can do on your end to make it, to make it good for your neighbors. So my humble request from the board would be to find one or two of the actual issues, the noise issues, the issues that Michelle, the people, the issues that people are complaining about. And to start with those rules, start with that law, and let's see how it actually settles into the community. That would be my request. And I'm done. Thank you, Marie.
Thomas's, Thomas's iPhone? Thomas, are you there? Then I guess the next person I have, I see Phil Heffernan, but the name says Denise.
He's crafty, that Phil is.
Yes. Phil, would you unmute yourself?
Yeah, sorry.
There you go.
Okay, this, I text a little daunting for a public meeting. Yes, hi, I'm Phil Heffernan. I'm at 97-9 Church Street in Cold Spring. And I want to briefly weigh in on this. When I received the first proposal, my first impression was this is a solution in search of a problem. And I, I want to say what an amazing job that you guys on the board did in crafting a place to start. But what evolved, and sometimes we get sort of a little over-involved in what we want to try and control, or what we sort of sense is a problem. And we try and, you know, put all our fingers in like 10 different holes in the dike. But there is no impending flood going on here. This is a situation where we have a very well-managed, I think, overall sense of what's appropriate. One of the great things is that most of the Airbnbs in Cold Spring are owner-occupied or owner-supervised. And they seem to have no impact whatsoever. That is their Airbnb enterprises. How do I know that? Because I've been doing this since I retired in 2018. And I created this as an auxiliary income, which is kind of what you do when you lose the big career paycheck. And it's seemed to work out extraordinarily well. No one on Church Street actually knows that we are doing anything different than I have done for 31 years in renting to people who want to be in Cold Spring. The lottery is not feasible, simply not feasible, because you have to make a great investment in making a place that people are comfortable in and can really enjoy. Our feedback has been extraordinary. And I don't have the data right in front of me, but we have a tremendous survey of visitors to the village. Most of them, 50% of them, not most, half of them, don't come here in a car. Now, in a place like mine, that means there's three new parking spaces on Church Street. Because half the people coming here don't have a car. And they have a tremendous respect for the village and for their being guests here. Anyway, I am appreciative that we have a permitting system to make sure there are no safety issues with people that would like to do this. Not everyone can do it, and I guess that's the original lottery. Many homes aren't suitable for this sort of thing. But those enterprises that can suffice, there's no problem, no impact, as far as I can see. Thank you.
Heather Hoaks is next. Heather?
Michael, we, after this person, do we just announce if anybody from the village, I'd like to get, that haven't spoken yet? You know, let's hear them first. Like Phil went after a number of people, but so you can go ahead with Heather since you called her.
Okay.
After her, people from the village, please, you know, speak up first and then we'll hear everyone else.
Heather disappeared, so I guess Ethan?
I technically live in, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
I live in Nelsonville. But I-
So let's go to Matt. I think Matt Francisco's on.
Okay, so Ethan, you'll have to wait again. Pat?
Hi, just wanted to thank the board and code update.
Address, please.
Sorry, 18 Orchard Street in the village in Cold Spring.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the board for taking this on. I know it's a, it's a thorny issue, especially taking it on during an election year. You know, but it's a problem that does need addressed. I don't think it's a solution looking for a problem. I think the meeting at the firehouse was clear that, you know, folks want some regulation. And I think, you know, Aaron Wolf's point was, was spot-on, is that it's, it's a use that has not been legal. So it's not really a, a taking of anything that isn't there. And certainly, folks have gotten used to it, and that's something that needs to be addressed. And I'm sure you guys will, will figure out the way. I mean, with respect to the B1, you know, I mean, there are legal options to do this. There are tourist home and hotel options. You know, so I think that's, that's worth considering as well, that if, you know, if you're in the B1, there, there was a legal avenue that has been there with the change of use. So, but again, I just wanted to commend the board for taking this on. I know it's, a lot of the work that the board does is not popular, as you try to do kind of the greater good and figure out what the majority opinion is. And I appreciate your efforts in, in trying to get there on a thorny issue that every, there is just no village, town, or city that isn't, isn't grappling with this issue right now and enacting code as we speak. And so it is something that's very real, that is happening, that needs regulation. And so I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, as well as the community input, you know, to come out tonight and speak civilly and kind of say, here's our side of it. You know, there are obviously, you know, several sides to, to every issue. So I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
I see Thomas again.
Let's, let's go to new people and then we'll get back if, oh, is Thomas someone we didn't get?
That's correct. I called him and he wasn't, he didn't respond and he's not talking to us now.
Are you a village?
I'm here, I'm here, mayor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
You got me?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom Corliss, 180 Main Street. Sorry, I'm not that technical with this. You guys are quicker than I am.
Not a problem.
Just, just, just to point out a few things. I mean, obviously, the village of Cold Spring is not Seaside Heights. I, I don't want to say that you're making a solution for, for a non-problem, because I think you're getting ahead of the game. And I think that's the right thing to do. The percentage, the insurance, the, the number of days, the owner occupied, owner occupied, I think is a little restrictive. You want it, you want it to be owner-occupied, but you also want to have a parking space. So if the people are there, then you're limiting the parking by having people, the owner being there. As far as the noise and some of the other issues that, that might be created, I think the onus is on the neighbors to call the police when there's an issue. There's laws on the books in the village of Cold Spring. There's laws on the books in the state of New York to, that regulate these things. It shouldn't have to come back to the village board. You have a building department, you have a police department, and that's where they should be addressed when and when, when and where they're happening. It's, it's kind of that easy. You know, we, we don't, we don't wait for somebody to see a fire, or the fire department to see a fire. Call the fire department. When there's a problem, call them. Mayor, you mentioned arbitrary capricious. I don't know, I don't know if we're headed for spot zoning with this, but I, I think that needs to be looked at as well. On the, on the upside, properties, properties that are, that are rented out for these things are- properties, properties that are, that are rented out for these things are in better kept condition. There's a reason for people to keep them in better condition, because you're renting them. Nobody's going to rent something that's falling down and doesn't look good. It's, it's a, it's a plus for the building and fire departments to get in there and actually inspect the residential property, which is not allowed once it's built and occupied. So now you have the, the benefit of making all these residences, residences more safe, and especially down on Main Street where they're up against each other. And the fire hazards are just, you know, unbelievable. You have connecting basements, connecting attics and stuff like that. So if you're able to get your building, people in there to inspect them, it's a good thing all around.
Tom, your time is up.
Okay.
Heather Hoaks, are you in the village?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get my, I'm not in the village, but I couldn't get my mic to work before.
Ah, could we, Dave, the mayor wants to wait?
Yeah, let's wait.
That is fine. I'm happy to wait, but you know, this really impacts everyone in the village and outside of it. So I want to make sure everyone gets a voice.
You will, of course.
Thank you.
So I see next, I, I see, yeah.
Yeah, Tracy.
Are you calling, are you calling me?
Yes, yes.
Great. So we live in the village 44 Parrot Street. We are the kind of family that goes on two short vacations a year. And during that time, we would like to be able to have another nice, wonderful family come stay in our home and spend lots of money in the village and support all of our amazing local businesses. So just to kind of give you a perspective on like, maybe a different way of doing Airbnb than some of the other folks who, you know, do it on a more regular basis. And for us, that is, you know, basically the way that we fund our vacations. We don't do this because we, some of you may have seen us on the front page of the newspaper related to Airbnb. But we would like to, and we have done this in the past, in New Paltz, we had a little house there. And so we have a lot of experience with it. But the policies that have been laid out really prevent a family like ours from being able to offer, you know, lovely home to a lovely family to come stay and enjoy the village. Because we, you know, we wouldn't be 20 minutes away. Although certainly we would be in touch constantly, and we have neighbors who help support us if, you know, something were to happen or they needed any help. And even just like the large fee for applying for a permit would kind of make it not, not feasible. And I think there are quite a few families in the village like this who rent their homes primarily for West Point graduation. So that would also limit families that only do it for that reason. I don't think it would make sense for them to go through all the many steps. That said, I think there are ways to have enforcement, you know, of noise problems. And I really empathize with the folks who struggle with problematic Airbnbs near them. I, I really feel for them. And I think it's important to have enforcement around those issues. But yeah, when we saw the policy come out, we were like, oh, this is clearly not meant for people like us who live in the village and have made a home here and are really committed to the community. So I will stop talking and let some other people chime in. Thank you.
Okay, next, Shelley Gilbert, are you in the village?
Yes, yes, I'm in the village. Hi. I was not originally going to speak.
I'm sorry, Shelley, and your address?
38, 38 Mountain Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, and I wasn't originally going to speak. I was just going to be a lurker. But I wanted to just reify one point that was brought up, as well as saying that a lot of people have great points. You know, and the occasional rental, people are walking to the rentals. You know, it's a supplement to your income, it's a way to fund a vacation. But I just want to really make clear one point, when you live in the village, especially in a very residential neighborhood like I do, up on Mountain Avenue by the school, is, and, and a lot of other neighborhoods in the, in the village as well. You literally, you know, have an inch between you and your neighbor in your backyard, or, you know, just your border. So you learn to be really polite in your use, your outdoor use of your, of your property. At least, most people are. I mean, there's always exceptions, but people try to respect each other. Others' privacy, you have your outdoor meals, your outdoor reading, whatever else you're going to do outside. And the thing that's happened, having rentals around here, large rentals up the street and a large rental across the street, is there are, there's so much noise, you wouldn't believe it. There's so much noise that I, who keep my window open at night, have to close it and, you know, put on air conditioning and put on fans, because I, I can't even go to sleep. Across the street, you know, you get eight cars coming and going at all times of the day. You have people outside, eight, 10, 12 people, bonfires, singing, noise. And I think we just have to be sensitive to the, to the noise and traffic realities of renting in the village. And if that can be regulated, I think that the very just, the very real needs that people have to share their home, owner occupied, or short-term rentals here and there. I think that we could find a way to respect our neighbors, respect our communities, support our communities, and still allow people to remain here. And, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
David, there are a couple of people in the village who have spoken before, and a couple who live outside the village. How do you wish to proceed?
I'd go to the new folks, then I'll get back to residents that spoke already.
Okay, then I guess Heather? Heather Hoaks?
Hi, thank you so much. I am actually in Phillips Town, so I'm not a, a village resident, but you know,
Your address, please.
Sure, I'm at 50 Healy Road.
I'm sorry, once again?
50 Healy Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, I, I don't have an Airbnb in the village, I'm not a village resident. But, you know, I can definitely understand these issues and sympathize. And it's just hard to hear that an issue that, you know, is caused by so few impacts so many. And, you know, I, I really just wanted to make sure that there's a voice outside that, you know, I, I have friends in the village. I have you know, some Airbnb house, some who have a, a business. And, you know, I, I can see really all sides of this. But my main concern is the impact to commerce in, in the village of, you know, the restrictions that are being placed that are, that honestly seem very, very overreaching. And I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned because we do, we do value everything that the village offers. And, you know, this, this really could restrict tourism, it can restrict commerce. And I, I really just want to make sure that there is a fair, there is a fair regulation that's put in place that, you know, can really support all sides. So thank you. And I, I understand and empathize with everyone here.
Okay, Ethan, you're up.
Thanks, everybody. And thanks to the board. I submitted a few comments in writing, and I won't reiterate, but
I'm sorry, Ethan, would you give us your address again?
Oh, I'm at 18 Cedar Street in Nelsonville.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to first, two things, one, echo Dave and Malia and a few other people's comments that if there are these issues such as noise, trash, parking, et cetera, I think these could be addressed, given existing regulations and enforcement. I think one, there's two glaring points that haven't really been addressed, which is why I wanted to speak briefly. One is the question of community. And I think that's a kind of a loaded term, the, the notion that we want people who live here and are committed to here is a laudable goal. But I question whether this has been fully researched as to whether Airbnbs are impacting community negatively, or perhaps allowing people to have enough income to remain, to be free enough in their evenings and weekends, not having to take on second jobs, extra income, and can actually coach Little League or et cetera. Secondly, I work as an architect in the village. And I really wanted to address a point that I think hasn't really brought, been brought up. There's a lot of technicalities in the regulation as proposed. The 300-foot law, or the 300-foot radius to me brings up a really challenging process, which I don't understand how. I guess there could be a map created that has a 300-foot radius surveyed around each property pre-existing. Otherwise, it seems as though every time a, a new property is drawn, they would have to serve, they would have to have a, a boundary survey made. And I'm not, I didn't, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me if that's a 300-foot radius around the perimeter of the property line or around the center line, excuse me, a center point of the property. But regardless, I think that, that is, it's a technical question, and whether, whether or not it can be appealed. And then whether the one month, the one month turnaround that has been proposed, whether it be possible to address potentially 34 different appeals. So, but anyway, I, I appreciate everyone's input. And I actually really came here to potentially be convinced otherwise. But I feel like there's been a lot of points that are sort of furthering the, the idea that maybe this can be addressed in a less heavy-handed way. Thank you.
Um, okay. I don't see any new people, so Tara?
Hi there, I just wanted to say that this is Tara Vamos, 6 Rock Street. I live, my house is six feet away from 75 Main Street, where Dave, Marzel, where Dave and Malia live, not live, but they have their building. They were Airbnb-ing it during the pandemic. I've been in my house the entire time, wishing I could go take up an Airbnb somewhere else, but staying home. And I had no idea that they were Airbnb-ing it until last week, when we were talking about this regulation. So it is totally possible to have completely, pretty much invisible Airbnb guests. And I do believe that the people that are the really difficult Airbnb house, that's super noisy, that's next to Michelle McCoy, I think that that is the same one that is across the street from Shelley Gilbert. So perhaps somebody can go and speak to that person in an aggressive manner. I half volunteer, because I would be able to slink back a way down the hill. But, yeah, so there, I think, I think good Airbnb guests are more than norm.
Okay, Irene Piazza?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, six Paulding again. Thank you for taking my follow-up. Just a comment on the, the concept of the 300-feet radius, which does sound odd, and at the same time, I don't dislike it. Now, again, I am not even against Airbnb. I, I'm not against it in concept, and I use it when I travel. However, I am attached to it. It's only an Airbnb, it's only been used as an Airbnb, and that address faces Paulding. Directly across the street on Academy, and I can see them from my backyard, is another Airbnb. Family lives there, and the bottom half of that is always Airbnb. So that's two within like a hand tossing distance. I turn to my right towards Chestnut, and there's a third Airbnb. And that's a 50/50. Sometimes that family's home, sometimes it's part rented out, sometimes, you know, again, what's my problem? I don't know. I don't know why three in my very line of sight bothers me a little bit. And I'm not even against Airbnb. So the two neighbors that I have, who've lived in Cold Spring for forever and a day, right? I'm friendly with everybody, thankfully, and they talk to me freely. Guess who doesn't really like the three Airbnbs? Those people. Guess who they complain to? Me. And I say, why do you complain to me? Did you think about calling the village? What for? They do nothing. And because what can the village do? Well, have you just, have you thought about going on the Airbnb site? There's a way that you can complain. You know, these are people who are north of 65, they are not interested, you know, in learning how to navigate that aspect of the internet. Okay, so I'm bringing back to my point, people who are honest brokers, in good faith, Airbnb, short-term rental people, whatever, facilitators. Would one of you go over to that house on Mountain Street and shake down? Are you going to enforce? Are you going to keep your people in line? As opposed to having the village somehow try to do it with all of these, you know, again, a lot of rules, which are, you know, kind of, some regulation is necessary. How do you weed it out? How do you give a permit? There's three people right in my line of business. Do they get a permit? Do they not get a permit? You know, so I have no idea about that kind of stuff. But I do know that it is a legitimate complaint or angst from the people who do not do Airbnb to feel that their residential neighborhood is just more of a business district. And that, that's all. So I know it's, everybody's, everybody's trying their best. Okay, bye, everybody, be well.
Um, Phil Heffernan again? Denise, you want, or Denise, is it you who wants to speak now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. So I'm Denise Freely, live at nine Church Street with Phil. I just wanted to quickly go over some of the survey. I just think data is really important. I've received responses from 106 of our guests. I'm not a survey maker, so these probably were not the best questions. But I thought they might be relevant to this conversation. The first being, how did you get to Cold Spring? As Phil had said earlier, 50% of the people drove here. The other 50% or 54 of those 106 respondents took the train or other, got here by other means. Out of those 50 people, or 51 people, sorry, that drove out of the 106, 19% or 19 of those parked on the street. The rest of them, let me do my math, 31 parked in our driveway. So 19 out of 106 people parked on the street. And that's about a fourth of the people that have stayed here. As far as people, why do you come to Cold Spring? Quick getaway is about 80% of those people. Is it your first time in Cold Spring? 58% or, I'm sorry, 58 out of the 106 said yes. How much money did you spend eating and shopping? Out of the 106 people, 8, 90 people spent more than 100. 55 spent 100 to 200, that's spending outside of staying with us. And 34 of the 106 people spent a, a 300-plus dollars. I think that's good for the businesses to know. How many did you, days did you spend in Cold Spring? Out of the 106, three days was 42, and the other 42 people, whoever spent for two days. There were only 15 out of the 106. And, and I'm repeating these numbers, not only because they're real data, but they do go in line with all of our guests that have been here. So this is about a quarter of the people that have come here. Do you plan on returning to the village? 66 out of the 106. Uh, sixty-six out of the hundred six said yes, so it's, they enjoyed themselves. They want to, they enjoyed spending money here and, um, getting away. Um, out of the the hundred and six people, how many said that they had many places to stay? Uh, forty-two said they had many places to stay. Sixty-three out of the hundred and six said they did not have many places or choices of places to stay. Um, and then, did you use the public bathroom? Out of a hundred and six people, uh, guests that we had, ninety-two people or guests said they did not use the public bathroom. Uh, thirteen out of the one oh six said they did. We had sixty-four open-ended responses and out of those, five said that they ended up moving here. Um, the other six said they loved the town. They thought everyone was friendly. Others talked about the shopping. If anyone's interested in the exact comments, I could print those out. Um, and I did look at the numbers and about forty percent of them said they wouldn't come unless it was an Airbnb. And including the fact that there weren't many places to choose from. So I think that is important.
Denise, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Tom Carles, you're back again. Or maybe not.
Yes, it takes me a second. I'm, this is a new thing for me. Uh, I I just want to touch on some of the things I didn't get to touch on and a few others. Um, it as far as Airbnb goes and and bad neighbors go, um, an Airbnb bad neighbor lasts for a couple of days. A bad neighbor, and some of us might be that bad neighbor, lasts for a long time. So I think it's easier to to put up something with something for a short term than forever. Um, the economic benefits, like the the lady before me just said and and other people have said, I I think is tremendous. I think if if you, if you think about what we all spend in the village on a a weekly basis, I think somebody for a couple of days spends a whole heck of a lot more. I think it's a good thing. Um, to to the mayor directly, I I think, uh, another, another, uh, in-person, when the time comes, public hearing is probably in order. Based on the numbers that were at the firehouse last year, last year, the year before versus what's on here tonight. I think it's a, uh, a given. Um, and try and, I try and go as quick as I can here to get this through. Um, the downsides and the upsides of the residents versus the non-residents, um, the volunteers, um, you're looking at our firehouse. They have a banner up in front of the fire department right now for volunteers. The EMS is in no better shape. I'm sure some of your boards are are in the same condition. You're always looking for somebody. Um, but they're, even without those, the people are not volunteering for those, the fire department. The 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 numbers are dwindling. So I don't think that that's hurting us. Where we've been, we've, we've, we've shut down condo complexes in and developments in Nelsonville or up in Snow Valley. I I think you may have been a part of that on on the town board or the school board, where, you know, it's overwhelming us. We don't, we, we, we seem to be playing this on both sides sometimes. And it is what it is, and I don't think that the Airbnb is going to put us over, over the limit by any means. I don't think it's a bad thing. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Um, I don't see any more hands. Okay, ah, except for David. I see his hand again.
Sorry, um, I just wanted to add that, uh, and my wife says not to shout like I did last time, so I'm going to try and talk a little quieter. But I wanted to add that, uh, you know, one thing that I noticed is that this, this, when I read through it, it said effective immediately. You know, like this is going to be effective immediately. And I just want to point out that people are making life decisions. Um, and and we just came through COVID and a lot of people.
We're not through it yet.
We're not through it yet, but a lot of people have have suffered a great deal financially. And and this is one thing that has saved a lot of people. So, you know, I I first, I want to say that I find that the timing of this is a little peculiar because this has been, uh, you know, for our community and for everyone across the country, one of the most trying financial times, at least in my life. So the timing of this, I I don't fully understand because this is the time when people are trying to recover from COVID. Also, I want to say that, you know, when people come to visit me here in Cold Spring, there's no place to stay. They have to stay in Fish Gill. They have to stay all over, uh, you know, uh, like they they gotta go all the way up to eighty-four. You know, my house, I can only take one or two guests. If I have four or five people coming to visit me, they have to get an Airbnb, and they do. And so, you know, basically, I think this all comes down to money. And for the people that have the Airbnbs to put these restrictions on, it could be crippling to them and their COVID recovery. Also, for the businesses in town that were shuttered for months, you know, if you go into one of those Main Street businesses, you'll be lucky to see one person you know on a Saturday, and you might see ten tourists. It's the tourists that spend money in the business district. So those people who run those businesses and own those businesses and their landlords, they need that that tourist income. And lastly, like, uh, Tom had said, if if you clearly post the fine system and have large fines, then people aren't going to be noisy because it's going to hit them in the pocketbook, right in the wallet where where it matters most. So I just want to say that, uh, in in this COVID time, I think the finances, uh, people's individual finances, the finances of the business, uh, the business district in the entire town. And also, you know, um, having some punitive measures with noise violation fines for both renters and potentially for the homeowners, I think is the path to go. As opposed to this permit system, which to me, you know, not allowing LLCs and having to be there within twenty minutes and restricting to six to sixty days and only thirty-four units. Uh, it just, it it seems like, you know, you're going to pit people against each other. I want an Airbnb, the person across the street's three hundred, uh, three hundred feet away. Uh, and and it's going to make rivals out of neighbors more so than anything else. So, um, I guess that's it. I didn't make it all the way to my three minutes, Marie, but, uh, I'll end there. You could, you could put the end up. Go ahead. I know you want to.
Thank you, David. Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't see anyone, David.
Okay. Thank, thank everybody for, uh, for showing up tonight and, uh, speaking and definitely.
Not a comment? Sorry, I raised my hand a little late.
Oh, I didn't see you, Matt, sorry.
Well, that's okay. I, uh, I pulled my hand up a few seconds after you said, anyway. Uh, if we have written comments to submit, where do we submit those to?
You send them to the village clerk, uh, you know, care of the village clerk, village hall, eighty-five Main Street.
Okay.
You'll get them.
Electronically.
Electronically, you can send them to the village clerk. Uh, I'm not sure what his.
VCS clerk.
Yes, clerk at coldspringny.gov.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are we gonna try this, try this again? All right, if there's no one else, uh, if there's someone else.
Hey, can y'all hear us?
Who are you? Can you give us your name and address?
Hi, this is Aram Lee and Nadia Matrally at twenty-seven Mountain.
Oh, can you start the video?
Go ahead.
Sorry, is the video on? We're just going to put the video on. Sorry for swooping in at the last minute. We've attended the entire meeting. I was just sort of formulating some thoughts. Um, and I felt it was like relevant to share. Um, so we're at twenty-seven Mountain Avenue. Uh, first of all, uh, we'd like to take responsibility for hosting, the hosting of larger groups that negatively impacted our neighbors. Um, secondly, for the record, after the last in-person Airbnb meeting, that was the pre-COVID one that was, uh, held in the town hall, I think it was. Um, I'm not sure what the date of that was. I'm gonna, I'm gonna guesstimate it was maybe a year and a half ago. Um, we took all that information that was shared, uh, in the in-person, uh, meeting and definitely took it as absolute constructive criticism. Our listing, if you can access older listings in Airbnb, was immediately changed after that meeting. Um, so that was a year and a half or two years ago. Um, it was changed, uh, to accommodate eight people. Um, and that was, uh, to ensure that it was two people per bedroom because it's a four-bedroom home. Um, and it was also made, uh, to include a family-friendly description. Um, COVID, I feel like happened so quickly after that. There was only a few, um, reservations after that. And then, uh, during COVID, we completely shut down. Um, so I'd just like to say for the record, we first and foremost apologize for running it at sometimes irresponsibly. Uh, my main concern now is that the information about our listing be updated to really reflect what, uh, we've learned and how we've like grown. And for our mistakes not to negatively impact other, uh, mainly responsible hosts with good intentions that want to add to the richness of our community. Um, and so, as it stands now, as a most present-day update, our listing at twenty-seven Mountain Avenue is listed as merely a one-month July stay for a family. And to be honest, tonight, that's the current listing, and we're probably going to remove that altogether and, uh, not even have that available because some of our circumstances have changed. So, again, we just wanted, you know, to apologize and, uh, and to advocate for a mid-range approach to regulation for Airbnb and not really destroy the opportunities and chances for, uh, hosts, most hosts who are honoring and, uh, you know, honoring the, the intention of Airbnb and and really following the rules and regulations and, uh, the trust of their neighbors to run responsibly. Uh, so, you know, I hope that that makes sense and and you're in some way receptive to that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
No hands, David.
Okay, um, I I think, um, I'll I'll take anything from the board. Um, I I would like to, uh, it seems like we can close the the, uh, the the verbal, uh, segment of the public hearing and keep the, uh, written portion open for at least a week. Um, and and definitely, and well, definitely for a week and, uh, see how that goes. So, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, close the public meeting for, uh, for their verbal comment.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, anyone can, uh, send in verbal, either email or hard copy or drop it off, uh, any way you'd like at at the village hall and, uh, and we will add that to the record. And these will all be able to be, uh, you'll be able to view all of these, uh, on our website. And, uh, so, um, so all all the correspondence have been written and sent in. They'll, they'll all be there for everyone to see, uh, as well as this video, um, from tonight's meeting. Is there anything else the, uh, the board would like to add?
Just thank you to folks for coming out.
Okay, yeah, thank everybody. Um, uh, we do appreciate everything you said. Um, and, uh, we'll definitely take everything into consideration. We will, I will be setting up a follow-up meeting with the board to to discuss the, uh, all the comments that were made and, uh, and go from there. So, again, thank everybody. Thank you. Thanks, the board.
Are we ending, David?
Uh, I, yeah, I think we should. Yeah, so I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank, thank you, board. Thank you, everyone that participated.
Thank you.